Good evening and welcome to the 2015 Manchester Town Council and Merrill Candidate Forum. Before we begin, we'd like to have everyone stand, face the flag, and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. The pledge allegiance to the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before we move forward with introductions and the rules of the forum, I'd like to thank the Carroll Media Center for hosting, Commissioner Dean Minnick for offering to moderate, all of the volunteers, town staff, and especially all the community members for taking such a great interest in this year's election. Let's now introduce Councilman Dale Wilder. Dale will proceed with introductions.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It's my pleasure to introduce this evening's moderator, Mr. Dean Minnick. Dean's columns and editorials have won multiple awards from the Maryland Delaware DC Press Association, the Pennsylvania Newspaper Publishers Association, the Maryland Chapter Society Professional Journalists, Landmark Community Newspapers, and others. He began his career as a reporter, served in the Vietnam War as a Navy photojournalist, and as a feature writer, editor, and managing editor in Hanover, Pennsylvania, news editor and editorial page editor of the Carroll County Times, and state editor for the Baltimore News American in the 1970s. He was a Carroll County Commissioner from 2002 through 2010, and holds a fellowship from the University of Maryland Academy for Excellence in Local Governance. Mr. Minnick, thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm sorry that you found a long form.
It's also my pleasure to introduce this evening's forum timer, Ms. Darcy Hott. Darcy Hott is an operations manager for Boston-based engineering firm EBI Consulting. Since 2004, Ms. Hott has provided project management for several thousand technical assessments and investigations across the country and across all types of commercial real estate assets, including healthcare, office, retail, hospitality, and multifamily properties. Ms. Hott specializes in the latest ASTM designations for commercial real estate due diligence assessments. Her consulting history includes subsurface investigations, site characterization and remediation, hazardous materials, surveys, energy audits, feasibility studies, and capital planning evaluations. Ms. Hott graduated in the top 5% of her class at Towson University, where she earned a triple Bachelor of Science in Psychology, Sociology, and Anthropology, and was named Most Distinguished Scholar in 2003. Darcy is an active member of the Baltimore Chapter of Commercial Real Estate Women. In addition to her career success, Darcy co-founded the Tree of Friends Foundation, a Manchester-based nonprofit established to address humanitarian needs which are not currently being met or underserved in Manchester and surrounding areas. The group operates as a 501(c)(3) under the guidance of the Community Foundation of Carroll County, and has raised over $60,000 for various family needs. Ms. Hott is an active member of the Eb Valley PTA and is helping to establish the Manchester Outreach Council, a group made up of local church, school, and town representatives, community aid workers, and volunteers dedicated to streamlining and enhancing outreach efforts in Manchester. Ms. Hott has been active in the Manchester community for 10 years, where she lives with her husband and her two daughters. Ms. Hott, thank you very much.
Candidates, go on.
Thank you. According to the format that we've agreed on, we'll start with the self-introduction of each candidate, beginning with the candidate at the far left. Mr. Pacelli.
I'm the far left.
You're the far left.
Good evening.
At least for this forum.
Very good. Good evening. I am Town Councilman Vince Pacelli. I would like to thank everyone for coming out tonight, and to those watching at home. I've been a resident of Manchester for 22 years. My wife Ruth and I have raised our four children here, and I've been a member of the Town Council for four years, the last four years. Manchester is a great, tight-knit community, one where you can truly depend on your neighbors for help, and it has been an honor to serve our citizens as a member of the Town Council. My priorities for the next four years are public safety. Manchester has turned the corner with regard to our police department and public safety. Incidents of crime are approaching rock bottom, and we have the drug culture on the run. Law enforcement was one of my campaign priorities in 2011, and as constant vigilance is required, it is again a priority. Priority number two is water exploration. We can never have enough water. New sources will be needed in the future. Along with that, I want to continue to invest and reinvest in water-related infrastructure. As an example, replacing and/or sealing water lines not only reduces water loss, but also reduces the cost of treating water; thus, long-term savings can be experienced. Priority number three is fiscal responsibility. Over the last four years, the town of Manchester has improved service in such diverse areas as law enforcement, bulk trash and yard waste pickup, our billing process, improvements at Christmas Tree Park, and purchase of property for a new town hall police station, to just name a few, all without raising taxes. This was accomplished through prioritizing our needs and wants, and always being mindful with regard to where the money comes from, our citizens. For the financial health of the town, this discipline and focus must be maintained. If reelected, I will continue to serve the citizens of Manchester with their best interests at heart. Thank you.
My name is Bruce Smith, and my wife and I moved here in 2008, and we came to Manchester after looking at a number of places that we could have moved to, because we liked the small-town charm, and we liked the rural atmosphere. And the other thing that we really found attractive was that our development offered town water and sewer. That was attractive, and it's something that will be attractive to even more people as they think about where they want to move. And those factors of our town infrastructure are going to have a great bearing on our future, both in the short term and in the long term. I would echo many of the same things that Vince has said tonight about the priorities. Tonight, though, what I'm going to try to do is to listen to the questions that you all have, to get a better understanding of the things that are on your mind. If you want to know details about my platform, you can go to votemanchester.org. VoteManchester.org. That's where I've detailed my insights and points of view about our town and where we stand at this point. I would say that I have found the Sustainability Report that the town has prepared, as well as the Comprehensive Master Plan for Manchester, to be the two documents that I've looked to as my guide as to where the town is going, and what are the issues that the town faces going forward. And so I hope tonight that we'll speak about that in more detail. Thanks.
Hello, everyone. My name's Jennifer Warner, and I've been a resident of the Manchester area community for 30 years, and I purchased my house in Manchester Farms a little over two years ago. I am an eight-year veteran teacher with Carroll County Public Schools. I've taught kindergarten, first grade, and I'm currently in third grade, and I've served on or/and/or chaired multiple committees. I have my Bachelor's of Science and my Master's of Education from Towson University, as well as additional postgraduate work from McDaniel College. I'm hardworking, I'm dedicated to everything that I'm involved in, I'm energetic, and I'm passionate about the things that I believe in. I am a big believer in not changing something drastically that's working. I think that there's a lot of great things happening in Manchester, and we've come very far over the past few years. I want to continue to help our town grow and continue to progress. Some of the things that I want to look into and want to work more for is to continue to keep our tax rate as close to the same as possible. As a resident, I understand what everyone goes through. I know what it's like at tax time to have to, you know, pay that bill and everything. Right now, we have a lot of great things in place, and I want to continue to have that in the future. I also want to make sure that we don't outgrow our resources that are available to us, our water and our wastewater resources. I want to continue to support our police department with their excellent efforts in keeping our town safe while working to eradicate the drug problem that continues to plague our county, and support them as they continue to work with other jurisdictions to identify sources of these drugs. Another thing that I want to work on is strengthening youth and community involvement. I'm a big believer that if you get youth on board for something, you're going to get adults to support them. I'm willing to learn, and I'm not afraid to ask. I'm creative when it comes to ideas, and I think out of the box. I support a lot of our local nonprofits, including the Manchester Fire Department Auxiliary. I've been active in that, as well as the Manchester Volunteer Fire Department Play. I'm a volunteer with the Carroll County 4-H Program, and I'd really appreciate your support. Thank you.
Thank you all. Our next stage is the prepared written questions, which I think I have right here, unless there are additional ones to come my way before we get started. Town Council Candidate Questions. We'll start with a volunteer first. Before I ask a question, I want a volunteer on who wants to go first? What is the -- what responsibilities do small towns bear in planning growth and adequate facilities in partnership with the town and the county and the state?
Our small municipalities bear a great responsibility with that. In the town of Manchester, we have what's called a -- we are in what's called a community planning area. That requires a partnership with not only Carroll County, but as well as the state. These three entities, the town of Manchester, Carroll County, and the state of Maryland, it's almost mandated to work together, but it's really the only way to progress. You must develop these strong partnerships. In our case, we have an incredibly strong partnership with Carroll County's local government. You probably remember that well from your time as a county commissioner. So those three entities must work together to move forward appropriately, move forward slowly where infrastructure can keep up, so on and so forth. So it is a critical role that we extend, an olive branch, so to speak, to the state and local governments, Carroll County governments, to make all of this happen. It's critical.
Bruce, you'd be next.
I would say that, again, there were two controlling documents that I discovered as I looked into what we, as a town, are looking towards over the next four years, which is the term of a councilperson. The Sustainability Report that was put together by leaders within the town is a document that was approved by the state and officially designated the town of Manchester as a sustainable community. And what that means is that Manchester has been given an official designation as a town that is managing its resources for not only the present, but for the future. And that gives us a special status within the state. With that also, the Manchester Comprehensive Plan has to intertwine or meld correctly with the Carroll County Comprehensive Plan. So in looking at those two plans together, we have a pathway that's already been laid out of where we're trying to go in the future, and how we fit together with the plans that the county has for future growth and development. And then the state, of course, is developing its own plans for growth, as well as its own regulatory plan, which imposes a great deal of outside burden on us. So I think it's very important in going forward that we take what we've already done and build on that.
Thank you.
I'd have to agree with both the gentlemen on their points about the state and the county all working together with the town. In addition, I'd like to add that currently Manchester has approximately 105 lots that are ready to be built today. They've gone through the processes, they know the permits have been approved and everything. Not that they're being built, but they could be built. What we need to keep in mind as well is looking at updating some of our infrastructure to be able to continue to support the growth. Right now, our water is working at about 50% capacity, and once some of the rainwater runoff settles and balances out a little bit from the thawing and everything, we're at about 60% for our wastewater management. We need to keep in mind that our infrastructure, while it's showing its age, will need to be replaced, and we're currently working on things such as replacing water mains and that sort of thing.
Thank you. We will have three more rounds of these questions, and then we'll move on to the next stage. The next question, and Ruth, if you'll start this one off, please, the answer. With the reduction of highway users' fees and police aid from the state of Maryland, and any other reductions that we might see while you are in office, would be in office, what ideas would you have as a councilperson to overcome these deficits?
I think one of the greatest difficulties that we're going to face going forward is based on the idea that we all, as a town, have up to this point agreed with that we were going to cap our growth at 5,000 residents. It's going to be very difficult, realistically, to have a set group of people, and with that set group, keep our tax base and our other revenue streams at the same level that they are today, and at the same time, there will be plenty of economic pressures raising the cost of everything that we do as a town. So we're going to have to come up with creative and new ways, new models of revenue, that we, as a town, can bring to bear to increase our revenue. The state and the county, I'm sure, will continue to reduce their payments to us. They will all be under the same pressure. What kind of things could we do? I've got 25 years' experience in accounting and finance. I have been the head of several homeowners associations. I've worked on a number of business task force groups, and I think that there are a number of models that are being developed around the country that we can use as models for growth within our town. But what it's going to require is that we're going to have to think creatively about how we raise revenue outside of taxes, outside of user fees, with some new thinking. And that's what I would like to bring to our town, is new thinking, and build it on what we have already built.
Thank you.
One of the things that we're going to have to look at as a town is keeping in mind that we have to balance out our new expenses that are coming in the future with ones that are previously in. Over the past few years, we have had drastic reductions from the state in regards to roads. They cut the budget by something like 90%, which has taken the amount of money, which at the time was about $225,000, and cut it down drastically, so that now the responsibility of that has fallen onto the town. In order to protect ourselves from raising taxes, we're going to have to look at maybe doing things more efficiently. Not that things haven't been done efficiently in the past, but we might have to come up with some creative-type ways to do things differently in the future. We want to make sure that we aren't stretching ourselves too thin, and we're encouraging new businesses to come in to continue to support us without raising the tax rate. Thank you.
Thank you. Next question would be traffic.
Wait a minute. We didn't hear from -- didn't answer my -- oh, I need my turn.
See, that's because you're over there on --
Already left out.
And not the first time.
No, not the first time, so, but I'm still not comfortable with it.
My apologies.
We have dealt precisely with these issues over the last four years. We have to give much credit to the Manchester town staff. They are exceptional and go such a far, a long way in helping us accomplish our goals. The key here is innovation. The key here is maintenance. One of the big things that we've helped ourselves with is being designated as a sustainable community, and what this has done is opened us up to grants. We've become eligible for far more grants. The fallout with this is also local business and nonprofits are also able to take advantage of these grants. When we talk about innovation, a couple of years ago, we were looking at road repair. And if anybody knows road repair, it is almost prohibitively expensive. So we looked at a variety of options. Steve Miller, the town administrator, took the lead on that. We came up with this patch and seal technique, very inexpensive as compared to actually repairing the roads in their entirety. It worked. We have extended the life of our roads for years to come. This is the type of innovative thinking that we need. Another idea or another thing that we did over the last four years is we funded a wash bay for the town's vehicles. Now, somebody would say, "Well, a wash bay? What's the big deal with a wash bay?" Well, the wash bay will keep the vehicles clean, will extend their life. So these are the little things you do. It's not pixie dust that you sprinkle over a bunch of stuff. You have to do a whole lot of things, innovative things, maintenance things. We're working on our water system. If we keep water from getting into our system from outside, in other words, we repair and seal the pipes, we save money on treating the water. So these are the little things that we've done over the last four years, and we will continue to do in years to come to counterbalance those reductions in revenue.
Okay. I'll let you start again.
Okay. I look forward to it.
Now, next question. What does Manchester need in terms of traffic enhancements or improvements?
This is an age-old problem, going back to the -- geez, when you look at the Comprehensive Plan, they were talking about a bypass in the '60s or at least the '70s. This is a chronic problem that we can't seem to get ahead of. We have worked with State Highway Administration. We've gone to the planning stage. We've done all these things. We've looked at Route 27 and 30. We've looked at putting a toll booth at the state line. That's a joke. We're not putting a toll booth at the state line. But we've looked at all of those things, and I think we just have to continue to plug away at that with the state to try to get some help. We look for funding options with the state to help as far as widening 27 and 30. It's very difficult because of the way the town is laid out. It's very difficult because of the nursing home, and moving homes becomes very expensive. And then, as we found out, there are certain pipes and whatnot that are underneath the road that would all have to be lowered or moved, so it's outrageously expensive. I think, in this case, we might just have to continue to monitor and hope that state policies change, free up some money, or there's new technology that arrives in the near future to take care of that. Difficult question. That can't easily be addressed due to funding primarily. It's just very expensive. So just to continue to monitor it, to continue to work with the State Highway Administration, I suspect we'll see some changes with the Governor Hogan administration in regard to that. It might free up some money for Manchester, and we might be able to make some adjustments there and ease the flow of traffic. But fortunately, it's the rush hour, two hours rush hour, two hours of rush hour. Most people, you know, tend to deal with it. I, as a resident of Manchester, am more than willing to tolerate it because this is a great place to live, but it can be a headache. But that's what we've been working on, and that's what we're going to continue to work on in the future, no matter who's on the council.
Bruce?
I think that there are two sides to the problems with the traffic on Route 30. From a business owner's standpoint, there are 19,000 or so people who come up and down Route 30 in a given day during the week. And from a business owner's standpoint, those are customers. So if you take those people off of Route 30, you take them away from that business owner. So there is a certain inherent conflict with reducing people passing through Manchester and also having a goal of local business growth. So somehow, those two things have to be balanced. As far as the planning for a major project like a bypass or something else that is going to really impact the flow of traffic, I can only imagine that there must be a tremendous amount of political will that has to be engaged for something like that to happen at this point, and that it will take a number of years for the planning, zoning, surveys, et cetera, to be done. So anything that would happen is probably more than four years and perhaps 10 years away at this point. I think that we, as a town, again, from a creative-thinking standpoint, need to, within our own planning, determine what we can do here, given the resources that we have and the situation that we have, that will improve the situation. And I think at this point, we don't have any answers, as Vince said, but I think that it is something that everybody within the town is thinking about.
I have to say, I understand everyone's frustration about the traffic on 30. I spent about two and a half years commuting back and forth from Limeboro to Glenburnie, and five minutes made the difference between getting there a half hour early and getting there 45 minutes late because of the traffic, not only on the Beltway and 795, but on 30 as well. There was lots of days where, when I was coming home, I would cut through Glendon, head over to Falls Road, take Falls Road up. It was about 15 miles out of my way, but it was faster, and I didn't have to sit in traffic. Unfortunately, fixing the traffic problem in Manchester is not going to be a quick and easy fix. It's also not going to be a cheap one. As a council, we need to continue to work with the county and the state to look at different ways that we could possibly redirect the traffic. A bypass would be years out. It would be expensive. It would be taking away residents and communities and businesses and that sort of thing. What's happening now in Manchester is people are coming up with their own bypasses, so to speak. They're using streets like Long Lane. They're cutting through the developments, and they're doing it recklessly. They're not being safe about it, while, yes, it is faster to shoot down Maiden Lane or Long Lane. They're not following the speed limits. They're not watching for children who could be playing in their backyards, who are used to being in a situation where they can feel safe in their yard if the ball rolls out into the street, to the side street. It hasn't been a throughway in the past.
Did I get everybody?
Yes.
Whose turn is it? I think it's Jennifer's turn.
Sure. I'll go.
Actually, it's Bruce's turn, but we'll let Jennifer go.
You can go. It's fine.
No, that's all right.
No, I think I was first, so it would be Jen's turn.
Okay.
That's fine.
Oh, boy. Number seven question on the submitted questions I thought was intriguing, and I'm going to put that out now. Having grown up in Manchester, I know how closely the culture, the community, was tied when I was here, and I suspect still is, to the fire companies, Lions Clubs, and the other volunteer groups in town. The town of Manchester supports nonprofit groups, such as the Manchester Fire Department, Hampstead Manchester Auxiliary Police, and Charlotte's Quest Nature Center. If budget cuts would be needed to balance the budget to maintain current services, as a councilperson, how would you deal with the situation or recommend it be dealt with?
I'm going to begin this time. Okay. Budget cuts are scary, no matter what the situation, in any situation, personal, large corporations, anything. With the town and some of the nonprofits that they have, they have a great relationship. They're working hard. I know that the town worked very closely with the Tree of Friends Foundation for the Christmas Wish Trees, and they were able to reach out and make connections through that. I know at Charlotte's Quest, they don't necessarily have a budget line in there, but they do in-kind donations. They do the mowing. They do some of that stuff to maintain and work with it. If budget cuts are needed in the future, and I personally see a budget as a puzzle with all these little pieces you have to put together, and if one piece doesn't fit, it's going to throw everything off. But if budget cuts need to be made, what we're going to have to do is look at different ways to continue to support them. It could be through in-kind donations, like we have with Charlotte's Web. It could be working out some kind of partnership or allowing nonprofits to come out and try different things and fundraise for them, and continue to have things in the community to support them if we're unable to fund them ourselves. Let's look at the community to continue to support the organizations that we have in place.
Thank you.
Some of the things that I would do, I've already touched on, as far as being more efficient with local government, maintenance, innovative thinking, saving money wherever we can save it. Certainly, our nonprofits are a valuable component of any community and must be supported at all costs. So there are a variety of things you can do within the budget process. Any budget process starts out with needs and wants. You focus on the needs, and if there's things left over for the wants, what we've done in town over the last few years is, when a big-ticket item comes up, we evaluate it. Can we extend it? Can we extend it a few more years? Can we get a little bit more life out of this piece of equipment, or whatever the case may be? So you have to be creative. You can't be constrained into a certain type of thinking. Fundraisers are a good idea. Moral support is a good idea. Donations in kind are a good idea. The whole idea of a partnership is huge and can make all the difference. So going back to how I answered an earlier question, by being more efficient with government, by watching those pennies, by understanding that those dollars, those tax dollars, are not our dollars, they're the citizens' dollars. They are the citizens' dollars. They are precious dollars. That gives you a whole new mindset. It's not like it's free money. It's not free money. It's the community's money. So you have to take that disciplined mindset to it, and you have to find that proper balance. Very difficult, very difficult to do, especially in these trying times. I know in this budget cycle, I made it clear that unless it was something absolutely needed, I was not going for any budget that required a tax increase. And the staff was able to pull that off, and they did it in the ways that I've described over the last couple of questions. And so that's the kind of thinking that we would need to continue to do.
My background for the last twenty-five years in finance and accounting has been one that has required me to advise business owners in this very question. How do they maintain and raise their revenues? So this is an area of expertise that I have a great many thoughts in how to go about this. I sit on the board of the Manchester Parks Foundation, which is the Charlotte's Quest Nature Center, and I've been on that board for a little over a year, and we had a problem. The problem was, we needed a new sign for Charlotte's Quest. And the main fundraising that we use turns out to be the three bocce ball tournaments that we have every year, that Vince DePalma puts on, on his bocce ball courts. And what I did was a very small experiment there, and it had to do with the way in which I conducted the fifty-fifty raffles that they used. And what I was able to do was to generate more income from the three fifty-fifty raffles than Charlotte's Quest has ever generated, and that resulted in enough money for us to buy the beautiful new sign that sits out on Main Street and points the way. So those are examples of very small, microeconomic ideas applied to a specific situation. I think that there are a number of models around the country that we can find of small towns the same size as ours who are burdened by the same problem and are looking for the same types of solutions. I think I can bring a great deal to the table for the town in that area.
Thank you.
I started.
We're finished with this round, and the next round is submitted questions, and at this point, I don't have any. So we can move on to questions from the group in here. Does anyone in the audience have a question? If you do, please stand, give your name, and state your question.
Should we use the microphone over here?
That's what I think you'd like them to do, yes. That would be a good idea, so we can get a picture of you.
And please don't be shy, because we're here to hear from you, not just to talk at you. So please ask us something, even if it's who we think is going to win the World Series this year, or anything.
That's the Orioles.
Of course.
No questions. Boy, you guys are getting it easy. You know that, don't you? Off this list? Okay, we'll do that. Let's go with question number eight, because I think simply, they're all good questions. I think many of the questions have been answered as part of the answers to other questions. This one's kind of on the outlier to some of the other questions, I think. If elected to Town Council, how could you make an impact, or the council make an impact, but you particularly, I think, is what they're looking for here, enhancing our downtown area while working within the town's zoning regulations? And let's start with, yeah, Bruce.
Well, again, back to the Sustainability Committee's report. There is a lot of discussion in that document about that topic of how to go about that. And as Vince was saying, there are the possibilities of a number of grant monies that could possibly be available to business owners, to property owners, for rehabilitation and upgrading along our Main Street corridors down 30 as opposed to, or as differentiated from, the one that is the other Main Street. So we kind of have two intersections. I think that one of the big issues about doing anything downtown is the difficulties of space limitations. It's very narrow. There's not a lot of space to move. There's no real room for any real expansion of sidewalks particularly. There's a very small strip of parking on either sides. You have a relatively narrow state highway that runs in the middle. So I think that there are a lot of challenges that have to do with the physical environment itself. Now, with that being said, we have a, I love going up and down that street and on the two side streets because we are surrounded by historical properties. We have wonderful opportunities to take buildings that are neglected by time and lack of resources that would be just gorgeous if we could renovate them. And there's one example on downtown, which is a painting company who's restored a building, which is very nice. So I think restoration is what we would look for.
Okay. In regards to Main Street, I think that there are some things that we could do to continue to improve the way that it looks. There could be grants available for us, not just for the business owners, but for the town as well. There are a lot of historic properties, and in order to keep that small-town feel, I would hate to lose any of them. Looking at some of the restoration and remodeling some of them is very important, but we need to keep that historic aspect to them. One of the things that I would like to do if I am elected to Town Council is look at exploring the possibility of a youth and community involvement committee. With this, I'd like to work with local organizations or groups, possibly the FFA at Manchester Valley or the National Honor Society or some of the Scouts groups, and try to work out a partnership with some of them to help maintain the Main Street community. We have a lot of stretches of blocks that have those grass patches, you know, in the middle of the sidewalk. They have that nice long grass patch that just kind of grows. I'd like to look into seeing what we could do about maybe maintaining them, putting some flowers down, working out with some of these organizations to help support us so that they could get community service hours, or we could work to beautify Main Street and continue to move forward. I don't want to go into a drastic redo and completely reshape the Main Street community, but we need to look into some of the things that are available to us to preserve the culture and the heritage that we have here.
Thank you.
I think all of the ideas that have been expressed are excellent. Prior to my arrival on the Town Council, Main Street did go through an upgrade with the sidewalks and retaining walls. We have partnered with private citizens in town as far as beautification and putting plants. I think that's one area to continue with. And certainly, being a sustainable community, as we've already touched on, that opens us up to more grants along those lines. And of course, we're going hand-in-hand with State Highway Administration beyond just resurfacing the road or widening 27 or 30. So these are all good ideas, and will require creative thinking to accomplish it. Again, we come back to that term that is so critical to municipal life, and that's partnership. Developing partnerships with everybody, the county, the state, community groups, to work collectively to keep the town looking very attractive.
Thank you. We have time for one more question, and I have something in mind that I would like to throw in here. It's not on this sheet, but it's a question that occurred to me when I was looking at the list. And it really can be, and it could have been answered as part of many of these questions. But it's one thing to run for a public office and tell people what you would like to do and what you plan to do. But when and if you are elected, then you'll be making decisions under pressure, and you'll be getting pushed and shoved from different constituencies or different factions, which means that you'll have to be making choices between what I always called leading and following. Are you going to lead with what you believe is the right thing to do in terms of addressing the issue at hand, or are you going to follow the public will? Even though it might not be what you would do. I think that it's Vince's turn to go first.
Well, that's a very intriguing question, and one that all elected officials or almost all leaders have to deal with irrespective of their position. Certainly, the public will has to be taken into consideration. Your job as a leader, if you are committed to an idea that is somewhat opposite of what the public will wants, is to sell your idea to them, to be a leader, to convince them somehow or other that, not that they're wrong, but show them in a positive light that what needs to be done beyond what they personally want. So it is a difficult, it is a difficult situation. It's always easy to just go with the herd. You got people clamor for this. Okay, we can do that, but we know that five years down the road, and that's something that's critical to this position, mayors, town council people, county commissioners, you can't look one, two, three, four, five years down the road. You have to look. In one case, we looked over twenty years down the road when we were looking at a solar project. So we had some pressure for solar energy. We looked at it. We looked at it. We looked at it, and it became, it just can't be done. And we had to explain to constituents, this can't be done. This is why it can't be done. So I think it's critical that you, as a leader, be a leader. And that means making difficult decisions and sometimes trying to convince constituents that, you know, in a positive way, not a negative way, to, this is what we're thinking, and to extrapolate from that down the road, five, fifteen, twenty years down the road, like we've had to do this past four years when we dealt with long-range decisions. We had to basically look twenty years down the road, long after I'd be gone, and how would a decision made in 2013 look in 2033? So I would take the leadership role and try to teach, educate constituents, and keep my fingers crossed and hope for the best.
That's a lot of it.
Let's be truthful with each other tonight. Democracy is messy, and there is no way in a democracy that everybody is going to be happy. And it is true in a democracy that there are going to be competing ideas, competing interests, and there are always going to be a certain consensus of people who are going to be unhappy and vocal about it. And I think that as an elected official, what you have to recognize is that your job is first to communicate in this part of the process when you are standing for election, and see whether people think that you know what you're talking about and whether you are talking about the things that they think are important and whether you seem to have some kind of a solution. Secondly, when you are elected, as I know from Charlotte's Quest and all the other different groups I have worked with over the many, many years I've been doing this, you're going to have to build a consensus within that group in order to get anything done. As you're building those consensus within that group, you're also going to have to reach out to all of the constituencies and make sure that you begin to build consensus with them as well. Inevitably, things are going to go wrong. People are going to be unhappy. You're going to have to be able to, one, stand up to that pressure, and, two, you're going to have to continue to try to find ways to work with those people who are in disagreement with you, because the next issue may be one in which you agree. So I think it's very important to build a consensus and to communicate.
There's lots of different leaders and types of leaders in this world. Some people make a decision, don't ask for input, don't want to know what other people think. Some people sit back and listen and let the group kind of decide. And some people who are good leaders know when to step in, to make decisions. A good leader needs to make decisions and support the decisions that they make. I am a very honest person. I will not make promises that I won't or don't intend to keep. I understand that not everyone will or does agree with what I do on a daily basis, and I understand that and I respect that because everyone has that right. I work with forty-eight, eight- and nine-year-olds every day. I have to make hundreds of decisions on the fly, and a lot more when I worked with five-year-olds. No, you can't touch that. Oh, careful. Be sure you do this. I have a lot of experience at thinking through decisions and understanding the pressure. If I make one decision, how is that going to affect all of the other students or the rest of my group? How is that going to affect the community? How is that going to affect the parents? If I say, no, you can't run in the hall, is that going to make a parent upset? Like, that kind of thing. I personally, when I come to make decisions, I look to learn everything I can about the situation that's presented to me. I take all of the information that is presented and available to me, and if I don't have enough information, I go out and search for more. I internalize it. I think about it. And I look for the best solution to meet the needs of the problem as it's presented to me. I understand that some decisions are decisions that will need to be made on the spot, and I'm okay with that. I have experience with that. But I also understand that a good leader collectively works with the group, in this case, the council and the mayor, to do what's best for the community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's it for the rounds of questions. We have one more thing for you to do before you're sprung. Take a moment and gather your thoughts, because we're going to ask you, starting with you, Jennifer,
Okay.
to wind up with a final statement. Let's see, is there time on that? Is there time on the final statement?
Two minutes?
We're running pretty close, so.
Sure, I can do that.
And so we can start whenever you're ready.
Okay. You've had a lot of answers given tonight, a lot of different perspectives and a lot of different opinions, and you're going to have quite a few more, because this is only the beginning. You have another round. I want you to know that I have a desire to learn. I've already met with town administration. I've talked with Chief Hess. I've gone to Commissioner Weaver's town hall meeting. I have, since I've decided to run, done everything I can to learn as much about the town, the organization, the way that it's run, the things, the issues, as I could in that amount of time. I put a hundred and ten percent into everything that I do, and the people that know me know that I don't ever do things halfway. If I take on a responsibility or I take on a committee or some kind of obligation, I embrace it and I get as involved in it as I can. I have experience in a lot of different roles, in different settings, coaches, leaders, volunteers, committee chairs, officers, that sort of thing. I want to continue with what is in place. I want to help our town grow forward, grow and move forward. I bought my house in Manchester because I love the town. I love my community, and I want to continue to do what's best for it and the residents. Thank you.
Thank you.
What started me on this quest of running for Town Council started at Charlotte's Quest in Pine Valley Park on a trail that I call Fawn Hill, where I was walking up the hill one day, and the dog that I take out went over and poked a baby fawn and had it stand up. And it was my first experience finding nature right in front of me. That was within a baseball's throw distance of my house. That's what makes Manchester so special, is that we live in an efficiently-run, wonderful town with a great amount of volunteer, community, volunteers who are willing to give of their time and their energy, and yet, at the same time, we live in what is a pristine natural environment. We get our water from the ground here, and we live in a very special place. I've gone to the last two budget sessions for the Town Council, and I've gone to the last three Town Council sessions. I've done everything that I could to make sure I understood the numbers and how that works. And I would say that going forward, what's most important is the involvement of the citizens of Manchester. Because without your involvement, without your support, without your willingness to get involved, without you going to your neighbors, asking them to get involved, then what we on the council do and what the mayor does will be fruitless. So what I would ask you is, no matter who is elected, that you all get involved and stay involved. And if you want to know more about me, go to votemanchester.org, votemanchester.org, and you'll know exactly what I think. Thank you.
As I stated in my introduction, it has been a great honor to serve on the Town Council of Manchester. Manchester is a great place to live and raise a family. I believe- I believe Manchester truly embodies Carroll County's slogan, "A great place to live, work, and play." And as your councilman, I will continue to work to make Manchester all that it can be. Thank you.
Thank you all very much for your straightforward answers. It's been enlightening.
And thank you all for coming tonight.
Are we going to take a break now, or what's our next step?